The presence of a quorum. Oh, I'm sorry, 113. I had the wrong, I had my, 113. I'd ask all to rise to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Before we begin the business of this evening, I would like to take a moderator's point of privilege. At the beginning of November, Town Meeting Member Bill Nicholson called to let me know that due to health concerns, he was resigning from Town Meeting. Frankly, I couldn't imagine we would never again hear his sonorous voice announcing, "William Nicholson, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8," when he stood to address the body. I've asked Bill to join us this evening. I've known Bill since 1987, when we sat on the Zoning Board of Appeals together. He has been a mentor and a friend to me for over 30 years. Bill's decade of service to the town has included Town Meeting Member for 48 years, Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, River Committee, and numerous other committees and commissions. He has been a humble and patient guide to many Town Meeting members and has always spoken at the Moderator's Town Meeting School. I'd like to first recognize Bill Clark from Precinct 7, Senior Town Meeting Member.
Thank you, Mr. Honorable Moderator. I was really shocked when I heard that Bill had resigned. Bill and I have been fellow Town Meeting Members for 48, 49 years now, and I just respect Bill. I think no other person, and I mean no other person in this town, gave as many hours in as many capacities as Bill has over the last 48, 49 years. I remember, and just tonight he reminded me again, I was going to talk about this briefly. He and I served on a committee for 20 years, the State Hospital Reuse Committee, a volunteer committee that was a real All-Star committee, and he was one of the leaders in that. Bill, on behalf of the Town Meeting Body, I want to thank you for what you've done for the community and what you've done for our Town Meeting, and your standards have always been
Thank you, Madam Moderator, for allowing me to speak. I'm only going to say what I usually say when I get up at the microphone. Bill Nicholson, Precinct 8 Town Meeting Member, is leaving. Thank you.[559.01][559.01](LAUGHING)
I would now, the festivities are not yet over. Take a seat, Bill. I would now take a seat. I would like to now introduce our State Representative Sally Kearns.
This is, please, Bill, place the body.
Yep.
It is my profound honor to be able to add a note of congratulations, Bill, from the House of Representatives. This was read to the membership adopted last Wednesday, honoring William Bill Nicholson for his 48 years as a Danvers Town Meeting Member and your numerous contributions to the town of Danvers. Whereas, William L. Bill Nicholson has devoted himself to the town of Danvers for nearly five decades as a member of Town Meeting, 1973 to 93, and then 20, 95 to 2021, the Board of Selectmen, 91 to 93, and a participant in several committees and causes to improve the town of Danvers, including the Zoning Board of Appeals, Madam Moderator, Planning Board, River Committee, Council on Aging, Hospital Reuse Committee, Preservation Committee, and Cable Advisory Committee. And whereas, Bill will conclude his 48 years as a Precinct 8 Town Meeting Member in November 2021, and his thoughtful, and his thoughtful and insightful deliberations have greatly benefited the town of Danvers, earning him the respect of all who know him. And whereas, Bill cherishes the institution of Town Meeting, believing it to be, quote, "the purest of all democracies, the strongest of all citadels of civil liberty," and has generously shared his love of Town Meeting and his command of its rules and traditions with newer members, becoming a revered member sought out by all in town government for guidance. And whereas, Bill has amplified concerns from Route 114 traffic to stewardship of the Danvers River, among numerous others, and was instrumental in Town Meeting's approval of the Massachusetts General Partners Hospital site on Endicott Street, which provides life-saving treatment and care to residents of the North Shore. And whereas, Bill had a long career in the furniture industry, worked for years at Tompkins Furniture on Maple Street in Danvers, where people would seek him out for advice on warrant articles and procedure. And with his late wife, Sally Ann, raised a loving family in the town of Danvers. As a gentleman of unparalleled credibility and integrity, is unfailingly kind and courteous to everyone he encounters, drawing the respect and the affection of all. Therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Massachusetts House of Representatives hereby join with his family, friends, and fellow Town Meeting Members to pay honor and tribute to Bill Nicholson, Precinct 8, and extend their best wishes for his retirement. And be it further resolved that a copy of these resolutions be forwarded by the Clerk of the House of Representatives to William Nicholson. This is signed by Speaker Ron Mariano, Stephen James Leclerc, and me, your neighbor and friend, Precinct 8.[794.31][794.31](APPLAUSE)
The meeting will now come to order. For the purpose of this meeting, I'd like to announce an updated COVID protocol. I would ask that you please continue to wear your mask as you approach and depart from the microphone. You may remove your mask while speaking. It is very difficult, as we have noticed in past Town Meetings, it is very difficult for me to see the back of the room from my vantage point. So, I would ask, particularly if you are seated in the rear, please don't hesitate to stand so I can see that you want to speak, and maybe hold your warrant up high. Okay? All right. Do all members have a copy of the warrant articles and the recommendation of the Finance Committee? I would like to appoint tellers for each precinct. Precinct 1, Nellie Moran. Precinct 2, John Jaworski. Precinct 3, Peter Swift. Precinct 4, Bill Bates. Precinct 5, Charlie Dame. Precinct 6, Larry Chisholm. Precinct 7, Bill Clark. And I need a volunteer from Precinct 8. Perfect. Thank you so much. Tellers should be certain to count their own votes, and the teller from Precinct 1 should be sure to count the votes of the members of the Board of Selectmen. For the benefit of new members, as well as others, the Chair will review some matters of information and instruction relative to the conduct of this meeting, most of which are procedural. The Chair will read each article or a summary thereof aloud, which will be followed by the recommendation of the Finance Committee. The recommendation of the Finance Committee is a main motion. Town Meeting Members shall usually speak on all motions before any others. However, any citizen voter in the town will be permitted to speak after Town Meeting Members have done so. As is tradition, all members addressing the body are asked to use the microphone. In special circumstances, the Chair may permit Committee Chairman or the sponsor of an article, or some other person such as Town Council, to speak before others for the purpose of information or other explanation, and that will occur this evening. This meeting, if it wishes, may change the order of discussion of articles in the warrant by majority vote. The Chair reminds all present that no person may speak without permission of the Chair, and that no speaker may be interrupted except for a point of order or privilege. All questions addressed to any other person must go through the Chair. Neither cross-examination nor reference to personality will be permitted. They are out of order. The Chair retains the authority at all times to rule certain questions and comment irrelevant to the meeting. Direct controversy between speakers are an affront to the dignity of the Town Meeting and will not be tolerated. All proposed amendments must be in writing with a copy given to the Town Clerk. The reason for this is purely for the sake of clarity, so we all know what we are voting for or against, and in order that a main motion after amendment can be clearly stated by the Chair prior to voting. I thank those members who have given prior notice of possible amendments. Specific instructions concerning voting procedure. The Chair will, from time to time, recite specific requirements or votes on certain motions. That will happen this evening. As a reminder, in June 1998, the Town Meeting voted to adopt Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 15, to authorize the Moderator to declare with adoption without count of any vote requiring two-thirds vote. Most of our voting is conducted on a voice-vote basis. If the Chair has doubt of the result of a voice vote, the Chair will ask for standing vote. Standing votes are taken by precinct. With each precinct teller reciting aloud his or her tally of those in favor, those opposed. The total of all precincts is then announced by the Chair. If seven members rising in place indicate they have doubt, the Chair will ask for a standing vote. After the Chair has made the announcement, the vote may not be questioned. Roll call voting. A roll call vote may be taken on any motion when the following conditions have been met. A motion must be made for a roll call vote at the conclusion of debate or after a voice vote has been taken. The motion must be seconded. Passage of the motion for the roll call requires a majority vote. A motion for a roll call vote may not be made after a standing vote has been taken and the results announced by the Chair. Interruption of any method of voting will be considered out of order. The Chair requests that all persons with cell phones or other electronic devices kindly place the device in silent mode or turn it off. As always, no smoking is permitted on school grounds. I would also like to call your attention to the location of emergency exits in the room, which are clearly marked and are on either side of the room, in the front and rear. The Chair asks for the cooperation of citizens who are not Town Meeting Members to refrain from taking part in voice voting. I do have one final reminder. Town Meeting is a legislative business meeting. The warrant of the Town Meeting is the meeting's sole agenda. No action can be taken on any matter unless an article concerning it is in the warrant. Discussion of any matter beyond the scope of the articles on the warrant will be ruled out of order. The return of the warrant indicates it was properly served. There is a motion by Chairman Trask that the Chair omit the reading of the warrant, which has been seconded by Member Bennett. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, the motion carries. We will now go to Article 1, unpaid bills, to see what sum the town will vote to appropriate for the payment of certain unpaid bills for previous years or take any other action thereon. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and good evening. We recommend that the town vote to appropriate the sums as presented in the warrant and explanation report for the payment of certain unpaid bills for previous years.
Is there any discussion? This requires a nine-tenths vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Article 2, Budget Transfers, Fiscal 2022, to see if the town will vote to amend actions taken under Article 2 of the May 17, 2021 Annual Town Meeting by adding certain appropriations or by reducing certain appropriations, by transfer among accounts, by transfer from prior appropriation under Articles, or from available funds, or take any other action thereon. Mr. Chairman.
We recommend that the town vote to amend the actions taken under Article 2 of the May 17, 2021 Annual Town Meeting by adding certain appropriations or by reducing certain appropriation, by transfer among accounts, by transfer from prior appropriation under Articles, or from available funds.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Article 3, Transportation Network, to see what sum the town will vote to appropriate from the Transportation Network Fund or take any other action thereon. Mr. Chairman.
We recommend that the town vote to appropriate $8,672.80 from the Transportation Network Fund into the Senior and Social Services Transportation Revolving Fund.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Article 4, Amendment, amend the Wetlands Protection Bylaw, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 26 of the General Bylaw, the Wetland Protection Bylaw, to address comments offered by the Attorney General and the Conservation Commission or take any other action thereon. Mr. Chairman.
We recommend that the town vote to amend Chapter 26 of the General Bylaw, Wetland Protection Bylaw, as presented.
Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Richard Parker, Precinct 4. This is all very well and good. I don't understand what the changes that we're making here. We're voting to change something, but it doesn't really say what we're changing.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I would defer to the Town Manager or the zoning enforcement.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Article 4, the amendments to the Wetland Bylaw, a major overhaul of the bylaw was approved by Town Meeting last year. When that bylaw was sent to the Attorney General for review, they came back with several recommendations pertaining to language that we actually did not amend last year that was out of date. So, the majority of the changes to this particular article have to do with feedback from the Attorney General's office. The second action taken in consultation with the Conservation Commission had to do with clarifying the 35-foot no build setback and the 50-foot no disturbance setback in the bylaw. The, and the red line versions of those are on the Town website, but those are the two summary changes that are being proposed.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Article 5, amend the demolition of historically significant buildings bylaw, to see if the town will vote to amend 20, Chapter 29 of the General Bylaw, of historically significant buildings or take any other action thereon. Mr. Chairman.
We recommend the town vote to amend Chapter 29 of the General Bylaw's demolition of historical significant buildings as presented.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Article 6, amend the zoning bylaw administrative changes, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 2 of the zoning bylaw, to update the name of the section, increase zoning fines to match state law, add new subsections pertaining to the headings, pagination, and severability, and to outline the powers and authority granted to staff and the planning board by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, or take any other action thereon. Mr. Chairman.
We recommend the town vote to amend Section 2 of the zoning bylaw, to update the name of the section, increase zoning fines to match state law, add new subsections pertaining to the headings, paginations, and severability, and to outline the powers and authority granted to staff and the planning board by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Article 6, amend the zoning bylaw admini, I'm sorry, amend the zoning bylaw site plan review, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 4 of the zoning bylaw, update the section's name, clarify its purpose, applicability, and procedures, or take any other action thereon. Mr. Chairman.
We recommend the town vote to amend Section 4 of the zoning bylaw, update the section's name, clarify its purpose, applicability, and procedures as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Article 8, amend the zoning bylaw, character-based zoning districts cleanup, to see if the town will vote to amend Sections 18 to 22 of the zoning bylaw to correct minor omissions and inconsistencies or take any other actions thereon. Mr. Chairman.
We recommend the town vote to amend Sections 18 through 22 of the zoning bylaw to correct minor omissions and inconsistencies as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Article 9, amend the zoning by law, residential conservation development, to see if the town will vote to amend how the zoning bylaw regulates developments covered by Section 33, Cluster Development, including the insertion and deletion of terms, uses, and dimensional requirements up to and including their complete prohibition or take any other action thereon. Mr. Chairman.
We recommend that the town vote to amend how the zoning bylaw regulates developments covered by Section 33, Cluster Developments, including the insertion and deletion of terms, uses, and dimensional requirements up to including their complete prohibition as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Article 10, amend the zoning bylaw definitions, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by moving definitions found outside of Section 40, the definition sections to Section 40, and incorporate updates to terms, add new definitions, eliminate internal inconsistencies, or take any other action thereon. Mr. Chairman.
We recommend that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by moving definitions found outside of Section 40, the definition section to Section 40, and incorporate updates to terms, add new definitions, and eliminate internal inconsistencies as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Article 11, amend the zoning bylaw, out of Maple Street rezoning, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw and zoning map to rezone slots 25, 27, 28 of the assesses map, 18, 500, 192, and 190 Maple Street, from the Residence 3 zoning district to the Commercial 1 zoning district. to the Commercial 1 zoning district, or take any other action thereon. Mr. Chairman.
We recommend that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw and zoning map to rezone lots 25, 27, and 28 of Assessors' Map 18, 500, 492, and 490 Maple Street, from the Residence 3 zoning districts to the Commercial 1 zoning district.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Article Twelve, amend the zoning bylaw, civic space and zoning district boundaries, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw and zoning map to create civic space zoning district and amend zoning district lines to coincide with property lines, or take any other action thereon. Mr. Chairman.
We recommend that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw and zoning map to create civic space zoning districts and amend zoning district lines to coincide with property lines as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The motion carries. Article Thirteen, amend the zoning bylaw floodplain changes, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw, to update, add, and eliminate certain federal provisions necessary to maintaining compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program, or take any other action thereon. Mr. Chairman.
We recommend that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw, to update, add, and eliminate certain federal provisions necessary to maintain compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Article Fourteen, amend the zoning bylaw, outdoor sales, display, and storage, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw, to update the terms associated with outdoor sales, storage, displays, storage containers, and the rules governing them, or take any other action thereon. Mr. Chairman.
We recommend that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw, to update the terms associated with outdoor sales, storage, display, storage containers, and the rules governing them as presented, except for the following revision as written on Page Four of your warrant.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Article Fifteen, amend the zoning bylaw, inclusionary housing, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw to address internal inconsistencies regarding the treatment of inclusionary housing requirements through code or take any other action thereon. Mr. Chairman.
We recommend that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw to address internal inconsistencies regarding the treatment of inclusionary housing requirements throughout the code as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Article Sixteen, amend the zoning bylaw, extended family living areas, to see if the town will vote to modify rules governing extended family living areas, or take any other action thereon. Mr. Chairman.
We recommend that the town vote to modify the rules governing extended family living areas as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bates.
I'd like to offer two amendments, and the moderator has advised me that we would take them one at a time. The first amendment is under design standards. I would amend the article to strike out all stairways, half stories, second or third stories, or entrances to basements, cellars, or crawl spaces shall be enclosed within exterior walls of the dwelling.
Is there a second? Mr. Bates.
Thank you. Folks, I'm just concerned that this is too expensive to make them close it in. In 2006, I was part of a subcommittee that looked at existing illegal in-law apartments in Danvers, and we developed a way for the town to maintain safety, but to also allow for the desire of residents to be able to have an in-law apartment which can serve a need particularly for one, from one generation to the next. This can be one, a son or a daughter that for any number of reasons is not able to move out on their own, or a grandchild coming back to help an elderly parent, grandparents stay in their home. Today, we have 182 EFLs in the town of Danvers. Ninety-one of them were existing in 2006 when we wrote the first bylaw. They average about seven a year. I ask that you strike this section because if you have a detached garage in the back of your property, we do say in the bylaw, or even in the original bylaw, you have to put the stairs on the side or in the back because we don't want it to look like a two-family. But to make them close it in could make it prohibitive. I ask for your support on this amendment.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the Planning Board concerning the proposal.
John Farmer, Precinct Four, as well as Chair of the Planning Board. Mr. Bates brings up some good points. This amendment really goes against what the staff in the ZBA has asked the Planning Board to consider. There's been some issues around enforcement, so this is intended for consistency. So the Planning Board recommends that this amendment not be, I shouldn't say the Planning Board, the Planning Board recommends the existing warrant article without amendment.
Thank, is there further discussion?
I wish my neighbor were here. I can't really speak for her. She had, this happened to her recently where she, her mother-in-law moved in at the third floor, and she had to build it out there, a stairway, had to enclose it, and the cost was prohibitive for her.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the proposed amendment? We'll now move to a vote as to the amendment only. This vote is by majority vote. And so, just to recap, Mr. Bates is requesting that the recommendation of the Finance Committee be amended to strike out all stairways to half stories, second or third stories, or entrances to basements, cellars, or crawl spaces shall be enclosed within the exterior walls of the dwelling. All those in favor of Mr. Bates' amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The Chair calls that that amendment has not passed. Mr. Bates, you have a second amendment.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The second amendment, folks, is under application requirements. The existing language for the application, and, no, where'd I have to get a second? I move that we have an amendment to strike out items two through 11 and add in the following: adequate information to determine compliance with provisions set forth herein. This may include, but not be limited to, site plan, interior plans, floor plans, and building elevations.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Bates.
Thank you. Folks, this, the application requirements went from three bullets to 12. And I'm concerned that this is basically, it seems excessive and expensive to me. You're not even letting a resident get to the board, the Zoning Board of Appeals. And with all due respect to Mr. Farmer, he's on the planning board. The Zoning Board of Appeals is where these things would go. That's the people that are volunteers. This, the way it's written, would require that an interior floor plan and elevations, rooms labeled, show location of all existing proposed points of egress. Plans must include a north arrow, the name and phone number of the person preparing the plans. Plan sheets can be no less than 11 by 17. I'm just, and it goes on to number 11. I'm just concerned that a resident would have to do all that before they could even file an application. So I suggest that we strike out two through 11 and just put adequate information to determine compliance with the provisions set forth herein, and I ask for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Farmer.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The intent here is really transparency to the applicant, so they know exactly what is required. So the Planning Board was comfortable with these criteria since the applicants, if they get successful with a building permit, would have to provide all this information. So the intent was to lay out what was required.
Just a point of clarification. So is it the Planning Board's position that these items are required by the Zoning Board? That's what I'm getting.
Okay. The intention, the conversation at the Planning Board was, this was asked of us by the staff through some input from the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Oh, all right. Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the proposed amendment? We'll now turn to voting solely as to the amendment as proposed by Mr. Bates, which is to strike out items two through 11 and add in the language, adequate information to determine compliance with the provisions set forth herein. This may include, but not be limited to, a site plan, interior floor plans, and building elevations. All those in favor of Mr. Bates' proposed amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The amendment does not carry. So we now turn to the recommendation of the Finance Committee, which is the main motion. Is there any further discussion? This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The motion carries. Article Seventeen, amend the zoning bylaw, planned developments, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw to prohibit use variance and authorize the creation of a planned development to take effect on January 1, 2022, or take any other action thereon. Mr. Chairman.
We recommend no action.
Is there any discussion? As the recommendation of the Finance Committee is no action, it only requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation of no action, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The motion carries. We now turn to Article Eighteen, the citizen's petition, to see if the town will vote to accept and to acquire at no cost the former Danvers Depot Building, Plains Train Station, which is presently located at 22 Cherry Street, Danvers, Mass., and owned and controlled by Cherry Street 29 Enterprises, LLC, doing business as Townsend Oil. Said property to be under the care, custody, and control of the Select Board of Danvers for any lawful purpose, and to approve costs of relocating said building to the Hobart Street parking lot, 10 Hobart Street, Danvers, Mass., and costs of restoring said building once situated at no cost, at a cost not to exceed $1,200,000, which will be raised by borrowing. This is a citizen petition, so we will hear from the petitioner, Mr. George.
Oh, you know what? Before we do that, I failed, I was so into making sure I recognized you, I did not get the Chair of the Finance, so sorry to overlook you, the Chairman of the Finance Committee for the FinCom recommendation. Go ahead.
We recommend no action.
Thank you. Mr. George.
I'm Louis George. I'm a town meeting member, Precinct One. I'm also a member of the Preservation Commission and the Planning Board, but I'm here today as the citizen in the citizen's petition to relocate, preserve, and save the former Danvers Depot Building, known as the Plains Train Station, which served as a one of, one of the nine train stations in Danvers. It was built in 1868 and remained in service until 1958, when rail service ended in Danvers. And so, like many of you, I grew up in Danvers, and also, like, you know, many of you, I've also seen many of the buildings that made up Danvers history disappear over time. In my own memory, I recall the Danvers Port Train Station, which was close to where I grew up on Water Street. That's no longer with us. Reaching further back, the Lindens, which was a, which was a home which was on Sylvan Street in Danvers, was taken apart piece by piece in the 1930s and was relocated to Washington, DC. So I lived in Washington for a fair amount of time, and, you know, so if I wanted to see a house that was from Danvers, it was in Washington. And so, this is really the last opportunity to save the last remaining train station in Danvers. It is a historically significant building. This was before the Preservation Commission this past July of 2021 because there was a demolition permit that was pulled on it. So the, under the demolition bylaw in Danvers, the, there was a determination by the Commission that the building was historically significant following a hearing. It was determined as well that it was worthy of preservation. So there is a one-year demolition delay that is currently in effect. And so, that demolition delay will remain until just this coming July. And after that, the building most likely will come down. So we have no, you know, in terms of, Mr. Townsend, you know, has been, has certainly been patient over time. I mean, the Town Meeting may remember that this, that this came before Town Meeting in 2016. And at that point in time, there was, the Town Meeting voted to move the station to the Hobart Street parking lot, but there was state funding that was earmarked. And so, the state funding ultimately did not materialize, so ultimately, it didn't, it didn't move. So, so now, Mr. Townsend came back again in just this past July. There is, there is currently a demolition delay on it. This matter did go before the, before the Select Board in September. There was a movement to put it on the warrant. It did not, it did not prevail. And so, I ended up preparing a, circulating this citizen's petition to get it before you all today, because this is really the last opportunity to, to save this, this train station. Now, mind you, the, you know, the price tag is, you know, is admittedly, is, it is a, it's not cheap. I mean, we're, you know, this is a, this warrant seeks $1.2 million to move, preserve, and to save the train station. And the, the cost, we arrived at the cost from originally back in 2016, there was a, there was an estimate that was put together with town involvement. It was a $741,000 cost to move and to preserve the station to the Hobart Street Lot. It was a generous, it was a generous amount to do that. It was intentionally generous. Ultimately, how we arrived at that, at the 1.2 million figure, is we looked at the Turner Construction Building Cost Index, which adjusts construction costs for inflation. So that's ultimately how we arrived at the $1.2 million for the, for the move and preservation and restoration of the station. And, you know, although damaged by, by fire in 2017, the station is solid. I mean, we've done a, you know, in terms of, you know, even just looking at the building, it's, it is solid. I know that in years past, I believe, you know, Town Archivist Richard Trask went through with a, with a, you know, with a, with a screwdriver and checked to make sure in terms of even the beams. I mean, what, the advantage is when this station was moved in 1922 or 1923 to its existing site, it was placed relatively high up. And so, as a result, you don't have the rot of the sills and such that could have, could have happened otherwise. So in terms of the, in addition as well, the town is well, you know, situated to bear the cost of this through borrowing. So, you know, the town's bond rating is, is solid, and the plan for this, this station as well is not to serve as a museum, but is to be an income generating property. So, and that's part of the location, the location in the Hobart Street parking lot, in close proximity to the rail trail, and also in close proximity to potential redevelopment at the hot white side across the street. The, it would be, and the building would be a, a good candidate for potentially for a restaurant, for office space. That's not before you today. Ultimately, the recommendation would be is if ultimately, you know, you all do, you know, vote to approve the preservation and moving, once that takes know, vote to approve the preservation and moving, once that takes place, then I recommend that the Select Board, who would have custody of the building, could then appoint a subcommittee which would help create a business plan for the adaptive reuse of the building. And we really feel that the station would be a, really, a centerpiece for this area. One note adds to a location, in terms of location out of the Hobart Street parking lot. I know I've spoken to some of you, and you've expressed some concerns about the location. And the Town Meeting in 2016 did vote to move the site to that location. Other locations had been looked at at that point in time, and so, this was really determined to be the best location for it. The location of the station itself, the footprint, would not take up a lot of real estate in terms of number of parking spots. I believe like about six spots is the amount that would be taken up. In addition, the Hobart Street Lot is currently underutilized. So, there is, even on a, I think even on a Sunday, maybe the lot is 70% to 80% used. And so, in addition, it's worthy of note that Maple Street Church has dedicated parking as well as Cherry Street Fish Market. And then, finally, I just, I wanted to point out, in terms of the, what we've gone through in terms of this process of the citizen's petition, we appeared before the Select Board a couple of weeks ago, and the Select Board doesn't, you know, didn't have a say necessarily because it's a citizen's petition, it would go forward anyway, but there, the Select Board did have a no recommendation. That was what this came to Finance Committee with. Finance Committee ultimately was a, it was a tie vote, but because of, three to three, but because as a tie vote, it results in a no-action recommendation. So, in terms of, in order to move this forward, and again, I urge you to, you know, I urge you to really, this is really the last opportunity to save the station, and I urge you to, you know, to support the move of the station. Ultimately, it'll be of a great benefit for the town. You know, there is precedent for the town spending public funds on, you know, such things as, you know, as Endicott Park. I mean, that has been done in the past. We can even think of other times when the town has spent money to, you know, restore the Town Hall, you know, some years back, rather than demolishing it. So, this is really a good opportunity for you all to step up and save the building. Now, because there was a no-action recommendation from Finance Committee, I will, I do need to move to amend the Finance Committee recommendation to, so that we move to amend it so that the original Article 18 takes its place. And so, I'd like to make that motion.
So, you intend to make that motion?
Yes.
May I have a written copy of the motion, please? So, the motion to amend the Finance Recommendation from no action to the original?
To the language of Article 18.
So, the motion to amend the Finance Committee Recommendation, the motion is to amend the Finance Committee Recommendation for no action to, I can't read your handwriting.
To reflect the language in Article 18.
Okay. To reflect the language of Article 18. As I've just added the word reflect, could I please get your, at least your initials on this? As in essence, the petitioner has made an amendment to revert back to the original language of Article 18. We will conduct the debate with regard to the amendment, proposed amendment, in the greater context of the article as originally written. We will then move to undertake whether or not, by majority vote, the amendment carries. And should the amendment carry, then we will need a two-thirds vote to enact it. Okay? So, are you finished with your presentation at this point?
Yes, I am, Madam Moderator.
Okay. Thank you. So, I now have requested to recognize Mr. Bennett, who is the Chair of the Preservation Commission, with regard to the Preservation Commission action.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Dan Bennett, Chairman of the Preservation Commission. And as Mr. George mentioned, back in July this past year, the Preservation Commission determined that the 1868 Danvers Plain Station is worthy of preservation, based on its distinctive architectural characteristic of the structure and its long association with Danvers' cultural and social history. Note, this was the second time the Preservation Commission ruled on this building being historical. This is the second time that Townsend has come before us, looking for a permit to tear down the building. And, you know, my way of thinking, it's like fate wants that building to be saved. The Massachusetts Historical Commission confirmed the significance of the structure for architectural, commerce, community development, and transportation themes. Per Mr. Trask, there were 279 surviving train depots in Massachusetts. While none are used for rail transit, they have been repurposed, 34 residential uses, eight private, 12 are vacant, 15 are museums, 17 are community and municipal buildings, and 158 are commercial use as generating income. The future of this historic structure will be under the care, custody, and control of the Select Board. Town Hall was built in 1855. The PBD Institute Library was built in 1892. Let's preserve the 1868 train station. Not doing so would be a huge historical mistake. Town Meeting approval will give time to fundraise through the Preservation Fund, Inc., which is a 501(c)(3) organization.
Mr. Bennett, that is not relevant to your position as Chair of the Preservation Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's save our history and a significant building that has an impact on Danvers history. I ask the Town Meeting Board to support the efforts to save the station for the use, further use, of our, future use of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion?
Alan McCarist in Precinct 7. In chatting with some of my neighbors in Precinct 7 and the various neighborhoods, there are a lot of people that are very interested in preserving the old railroads.
Thank you. Is there further discussion?
Nova Samada, Precinct 1. Well, I agree with what Mr. George said, that it is not a small price tag by any stretch. I do still support it. It would be great to save this last train station. The craftsmanship that you just don't see anymore, this is it. And if it gets demolished, that's it, we just don't have anymore. It never comes back. And it's not as if the town has a savings account, where we can save up a bunch of money and do this. The only way we can do larger projects is to borrow. That's it. That's our only option. We didn't vote for CPA, so this is it. And this goes for any project we want to do in town, not just saving a building. So, I hope we can support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Mike Powis, Precinct 6. I actually love this building, and I have been involved with it since the 1980s, when I was on the Recreation Committee. And we've had numerous proposals to move it down to the high school, to move it onto Elm Street, to move it to its current location, and numerous other suggestions, none of which have come to fruition. I believe the reason we are here today is because there is no viable option, given the current availability of land and the relative cost to move, to renovate, and to make the building whole. You're asking 1.2 million, based on an older architectural design. The building itself has declined significantly since then. There's the fire with the oil truck next to it. There's the spillage inside the building, and this is the general decay that comes just from being exposed to New England winters and New England storms. Now, let's take and say, we did this, and we borrowed the money, and we moved it, and we were able to renovate it. To me, another big component that is missing is maintenance. Once we get this, and once we renovate it, we own it. We're responsible for it. We have to keep it safe. We have to keep it safe from damage itself, damage to others, because we have a major empty building sitting on Hobart Street. I appreciate the fact that there is a real desire to make this a private enterprise. But you know what? Restaurateurs and business people are pretty good at doing business. They're pretty good at identifying opportunities and ways to make money and provide services to the town for profit. And I have yet to hear of anybody from the private sector express an interest in doing this. So, if we're going to go, like, on a restaurant, at some future Town Meeting, we are going to say, we need to attract a tenant, so we have to upgrade the building, bring it to code, bring in equipment for whatever use we decide we want to do. And now, we're a town and a community, and we're in private business. I'm sorry. As much as I love the building, that is not appropriate. Finally, I was also on the board when the Hobart Street parking lot issue came out. For those of you that don't recall, the MBTA owned that land, and was going to sell it for condo development. Maple Street Church and other businesses in the downtown area were very, very concerned because it was a de facto public parking lot, unpaved at that point. The town went out, what came forward, and purchased that lot and developed it. But we didn't do it alone. There were numerous private entities that made investments in that lot for their own purposes, Maple Street Church being one of them, but there were several others in the surrounding area. They have an investment with the expectation that that would continue in perpetuity as a parking lot. Now, we're saying, well, we're just going to take six lots, six spots. It's underutilized. Okay, I'll even take that at face value, although I don't know where a utilization analysis comes from. But even so, there's an element of fairness to the people that helped the town buy this. And let's take it to the next step. We develop it, we invest, we make it a restaurant. Then what? How many more cars are going to come in? We have a wonderful thing going with the rail trail, so now, we're going to have day hikers coming in and staying, doing a hike, and then going to lunch, and the use of that parking lot and the traffic in the area is going to increase significantly again. Plus, we have the 40-yard development on the other side coming in. So, the number of people living and working, the number of visitors coming into that area is going to grow dramatically. So, I'm sorry, as much as I would love to support this, I cannot. This will not be successful. This will cost the town a lot of money over the long run, and it's inherently unfair to those in the surrounding area that are relying on this lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Mr. George, you can take a seat. You don't need to stand. I apologize.
No, it's all good.
Kevin Gibbons, Precinct 3, Town Meeting Member. I am also the co-chair of the trustees in Maple Street Church. Maple Street Church, as you just heard, contributed $200,000 to that parking lot, as well as Daryl Parker, who contributed a lot of money to that parking lot. So, we have a considerable investment in that parking lot. And it has been during our trustees meetings over the past couple of months, hearing this come up, it's been, we were very much against that, because it's basically a breach of contract, which is, it was pretty much a gentleman's agreement, but Paul, our treasurer, who was here, has a list of people who did contribute to the parking lot, which we show you. Am I, do I like Louis' petition? Yes. As far as preservation goes, just not in that parking lot. As Mr. Powis just brought up, eventually, Maple Square, or whatever is going to go in there after Jeremy works something else out, it's going to be more parking there, and people are going to park in there. I mean, it might be unutilized right now, but if we put that there, it will be overly utilized, and it will fill up. And it does take the pressure off the downtown. And after COVID, Maple Street Church will be using it more again. Just not there. I had talked to Jeremy Lee today about where the rail shed is, because that's also historically significant, and if it would fit in there. But Jeremy's not interested right now. If somebody wants to offer him an overabundance of money, maybe he would be interested. But with what happened with Maple Square, he's not too happy right now. Mr. Bradstreet, I think, is here, and I thought he said at the Preservation Committee meeting, and you can tell me if it's true or not, that he would rethink.
You know what? We.
Can't do that?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for the whole feedback. I need to relearn. All right. Yeah, I thought that would be a good place where the rail shed is, to put it at a rail station, but not in the parking lot. People have invested a lot in this town, and it would be a breach of contract to them, not only Maple Street Church and Cherry Street Fish, but also the people downtown who contributed to money. So, I would vote against the amendment, as much as I like Louis.
Thank you. Further discussion? Sir? Sir?
Paul Eathius, Precinct One, and I'm also the treasurer of Maple Street Congregational Church. And when that parking lot was a mud lot, and the town wanted to buy it from the MBTA, they went out, looked and said, well, we can't afford it, but if we could raise enough money, oh, maybe we can do it. Now, the church and several other people, and several businesses and someone sitting in this room tonight, contributed over half a million dollars to build that parking lot. And it was intended to be a parking lot, not a commercial adventure. You put the building in there, as Mr. Powis said, you're going to have to rehab it, you're going to have to insure it, you're going to have to find a tenant. The tenant's going to use, if it's a restaurant, he's going to use up the parking lot. And the parking lot was never intended for commercial use. It was committed for the use of the citizens of the town to go downtown, to walk on the rail trail. So I would very unhappy, and I will not vote for this under any circumstances.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Mr. Trask.
Sorry about the delay. Madam Moderator, fellow meeting members, citizens of Danvers. I have been attending town meeting as a member since 1968. Though over those 53 years, I have given hundreds of talks, I've always been nervous to speak at town meeting. Tonight, when I wanted to speak to you from my heart, permit me to read my remarks, so in my nervousness, I won't forget what I wanted to say to you. I could refute at least three or four points that the last two members gave, and remind us that in 2016, Town Meeting in its wisdom decided that the parking lot was a good site if we could get the funding for it, but I would rather stick with my notes here. I love Danvers, in spite of some difficulties, past and present. It is the home of many of my ancestors, and where I grew up, and then had a family of my own. Most everyone has affection for their native community, yet Danvers is not appreciably better than anywhere else, though it is unique to its own set of circumstances. The most important contributing factors to a locale are its geography, its people, and its built environment. The most visual identity rests in the progression of its built environment, the homes, churches, and businesses which give a community its architectural uniqueness. Without the cherishing and preserving of the best of the built past of a town, we lose its tradition and story into a mushy, culturally neutral, and uninspiring anywhere USA. We in Danvers must be progressive while retaining, through planning, preserving, and adaptive reuse, the best of our heritage in neighborhoods. Our history and preservation is mixed at best. Each year, with less usable land and more development pressures, we continue to lose major historic chunks of our community. In our past, nationally significant dwellings have been lost, including the 1670s Jacob's House off Water Street, home of executed witch George Jacobs, who in 1692 bravely said, "Well, burn me or hang me, but I'll stand in the truth of Christ." The beautiful Greek Revival Oak Knoll Mansion off Summer Street, which was the resident of poet and abolitionist John Greenleaf Woodier, torn down and burned at the Danvers Stump in 1958. All the 19th century Gothic buildings and most of the 1874 Kirkbride complex at Danvers State Hospital destroyed, which entire property had been placed in 1983 on the United States National Register of Historic Places. And only several years ago, we lost the 1894 Queen Anne Revival dwelling on Conant Street to make way for a parking lot, and came close to losing the 1660s Porter Bradstreet House on Locust Street, one of fewer than 300 of our nation's earliest surviving dwellings. All this is prologue in the manner at hand, whether Danvers is willing to save the last and best of our original nine 19th century railroad stations. From its beginning in the 1840s, the railroad system was the lifeblood of American commerce, and Danvers was an important hub with two major lines bisecting our community, serviced by nine separate stations. In 1868, Danversite and railroad master carpenter Charles Ingles, a Civil War veteran of Andrew Sharpshooter's and resident at Seven Holton Street, built the architecturally significant Gothic-style Danvers Plains Railroad Station on Essex Street. Rich in detail, the 66 by 25-foot depot features a hip roof, a surrounding 10-foot canopy supported with paired brackets and intricately detailed barge boards. In 1923, with the decline of rail service, this building was moved 1,000 feet to become the primary station in Danvers at the confluence of the Western and Eastern Division railroad tracks. By about 1960, the station was abandoned, and there it has been sitting, awaiting either a new useful life or what is now its imminent destruction. Everyone seems to want to preserve this building into what should become one of Danvers's signature structures. It could be developed into a wayfare for our popular rail trail, function as a business such as an architect's or lawyer's office, become a specialty shop or shops, or be fashioned into a fine dining establishment. I've been contacted by one restaurateur in Wenham who was interested, but not where it is at present. Our unique station will be able to contribute, just like the many other unique preserved railroad stations in Massachusetts that have been saved by other committed citizens and local governments for local use, including 17 that have become community or municipal buildings and 158 made into commercial properties. Or in a few months, it will become a pile of 19th century refuse, ready to be cotted to landfill. What a waste, and what a local defeat. Scores of people have been trying to save this station since 2002. The Townsend's have been more than patient. Several times, we almost thought we had a solution to saving it, only to be knocked on our behinds. Town Meeting never had the opportunity to save any of those remarkable dwellings we have lost, like when in 1937, rich out-of-staters stole our local colonial heritage, the Lindons, made it into a Washington, DC trophy house. Or when a developer tore down Oak Knoll, where cultural and political luminaries such as Emperor Dom Peron of Brazil made pilgrimage to Danvers, the literary capital of the United States, in order to meet Whittier. But now, this time, you do have a voice and a vote. Yes, you are being asked to do something which Danvers seldom has done, but which many other enlightened communities do on occasion, to save a piece of our town heritage and make it into something generations into the future will be able to view and enjoy. I sincerely have confidence that such a vote will be good for our community and for our future. And though it is quite gauche for me to say this, I want you to know my commitment is not just words. To show my sincerity, I'll be pleased to commit to the project $5,000, a not insignificant amount for an archivist, and trust that others will assist in making this project not just of the town, but of the community. And since we already have a nonprofit that people can donate to, we hope to be able to raise a goodly amount for that. Thank you for listening to me, and I promise not to speak for the next 10 town meetings. Please support our heritage.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Sir?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Richard Park, Precinct Four, again, sorry for the continued interruptions. In the 17th, 18th, early 18th centuries, we had the French and Indian Wars, and many of the towns on the frontier had garrison houses where the people would gather for safety during these attacks. They'd have four to six of these houses. I will bet that, I haven't seen one, many of them don't exist anymore. Once that history's gone, it's gone. I would love to see a garrison house, but I think there's one left in Chelmsford. Anyway, if we don't save the train station, it's gone, and never mind.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Selectman Trask.
I don't envy anyone who has to get up after Mr. Trask. I don't think there's anybody I respect or love more than my uncle and his diligence to preserving this town and the history of it and of the area. And this is an important decision for Town Meeting to make, and so with the emotion of the subject, I just want to offer that in our roles as financial stewards, we should consider some other parts of the story so we make an informed decision. What's in short, there's three things in short supply here: time, money, and methodical planning. And those are things that we don't go into Town Meeting with or engage in a town project with without actually going deeply into all three. Now, comes the time, we've had 20 years. It's been 20 years and multiple attempts to save this project. There's been multiple attempts to fundraise for it. There's been opportunities to move it that have been dashed. And make no mistake, I was a champion in 2016 as a selectman. I was a champion for the warrant that we had that passed. And it passed primarily because of the promotion of, or the strong potential of, state funding. As a matter of fact, it only passed because of state funding. The warrant language itself said, only if we get the state funding, would this go forward. It was a concern then, it's a concern now. Money is, it's hard to pit money against history, it's hard to pit it against our emotion, but there is a reality here. The other reality is that the money that's being suggested, the 1.2 million dollars, is based on thumbnail estimates that happened in 2015 to appease or to answer to the potential of state funding. It wasn't a deep dive into how much will it cost for every component that's part of this project. It was, we'll get some estimates for moving. We'll get some rough estimates based on past experience for building a foundation, running utilities, placing the station, and rehab. And while it was just under 800,000 then, and it's being proposed at 1.2 million now, that's based on the projection or the added increase of, as Mr. Bennett will tell us, has told us in other meetings, that they extrapolate, the construction costs have risen 37% since 2015, 2016, when we first heard this. But in that time, as Mr. Powis has said, other things have happened to that building. So while even if the estimates were actual and real and truly defined at that time, we're going forward without the knowledge of what it will take now, given that we've had a fire there for the deterioration. I would love to save this. If you make this decision to do this, I'll be just as happy as anybody else, but you need to make a decision that's informed. Also, this town is not landlords. There's only three buildings that the town owns that are not occupied by a town facilities. That's the Williams School for the Ad Association. It was the Putnamville School for another smaller group that they've left. And the third is the Food Pantry. This town is not in the business of being landlords. And so to create a business plan, to figure out what the maintenance costs would be, to figure out the rent would be, that would be a departure for the town. I want this to pass. Let me rephrase it. I would like this to pass, but as a fiduciary steward here, I don't see that the planning and the money is there. I would like you to vote your conscience, do what you think is right. I would love to preserve it as well, but I don't think that the, I don't think the facts bear that out at this point. And I hate to make it a money against history discussion, but that's part of our role is to look at the fiduciary responsibility of this town as well. Thank you.
Is there further discussion?
Colley Rybicki, Precinct Seven. I was just wondering if the town had a legal opinion on the strength of these handshake agreements? My concern after listening to the debate tonight is, if this were to go through, we move the train station, we put it in the parking lot, are we then going to have a legal battle, for lack of a better term, with all the people that have made the investment in that parking lot, filing suits against us, and then we'd be left with the train station and the parking lot for a lot, for a lot longer? And then be, heaven only knows, with this litigious society we live in, someone will tell us to go put it back or get it out of there. So just kind of curious as to how we think the strength of these handshake agreements is when the parking lot went in.
Thank you. And I'm being informed here that there has not been a legal opinion requested or rendered on that issue.
Okay.
So, hold on one second. I was going to get the gentleman in the back, and then I'll come forward to you.
Thank you. Jim Simon, Precinct Seven. Is there anyone here that could tell us what portion of that parking lot was financed by the town? Nobody?
Nope. I'm looking around to see if there is an answer to that.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I wish I could channel my inner Rick Rogers. He would have that answer off the top of his head. You heard mentioned earlier that north of a half a million dollars was raised privately. I believe that was approximately half of the cost to acquire, but the cost to build and maintain has been borne by the town since then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Has any, anything been done, like, the property that sits on, it sits right on the rail trail, if I'm not mistaken, right? The, that station? It butts the rail trail. The rail trail's right in front of it, am I correct?
The property is in town, is on Townsend property, and it does abut the rail trail.
Right. So if we, if anybody go to the Thompsons and find out how much it would cost just to buy the property that it's on, $400,000 or something like that, maybe, and just leave it where it is, fix it up?
I believe the town has approached Townsend. They're interested in the use of the land. And I want to first, I want to say, right out of the bat, I thank the Thompson family, the family for being so patient and allowing us multiple tries at this, but they're not interested, as I understand, in selling the property to Danvers for the train station use. It's not just the lot it's on, but the surrounding need.
Right, but if we just bought the section, you know what I'm trying to say, if you gave him 400,000 or something like that for that section, if it butts the rail trail anyways, right there.
We've never approached them officially, and they have never shown an interest in offering us and extending that offer to us.
It'd be worth looking into.
But, you know, I should make a clarification. That is not the proposal that's before the board, that's before the meeting. Is there further discussion? Is there further discussion, sir?
Good evening. Douglas Daley, Precinct Three. I just want to say I support the citizens' petition. I know I've heard the pros and cons here today, but as it's been deemed, it's a building of historic significance. And in previous town meetings, you know, we've been trying to push to save it, and I think we should follow through on that and where there's a will, there's a way. And, you know, Mr. Trask got the ball rolling with donation. I think, you know, if we put an effort to it, that we could, could go through and save this and, you know, preserve, preserve part of Danvers' history. And, you know, as time goes on, there's not much left to save, so I think these few pieces become far more valuable. Thank you.
Thank you. There, there has been a request that the question be moved. All those in favor of moving the question, please say aye. Any opposed? The question has been moved. We now turn to voting on the proposed amendment. And let me read it back to you, if I could retain that from the town. The motion to amend is as follows. To amend the Finance Committee recommendation from no action to reflect the language of Article 18. This requires just a majority vote because we're voting on the amendment. All those in favor of amending the recommendation of the Finance Committee to reflect the language of Article 18, please say aye. Any opposed? The noes carry it. The article has not been amended. We now turn to voting the action of the Finance Committee, which, as it is no action, requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the Finance Committee recommendation of no action, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. The recommendation of the Finance Committee stands to no action. Now, at the end of our warrant for this evening, and so I need a motion, please, to adjourn the town meeting. The motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you and good night.